Okay, next we're gonna go into four proclamations, first one being Police Week for the May eleventh through seventeenth.
Okay, we ready? So the proclamation reads, whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Alvin Police Department, and whereas every day law enforcement officers throughout the nation face the threat of violence and danger, routinely putting their lives in jeopardy to defend others selfishly risking injury, disability, and even death. And whereas the city of Alvin honors all our officers, past and present, for their faithful and dedicated service. Their unwavering commitment has provided invaluable support to our community, leaving a lasting legacy of peace and safety for all Alvanites. Now therefore, I, Gabe Adame, as the Mayor of the City of Alvin, Texas, and on behalf of the City Council hereby declare the week of May eleventh through May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five as Police Week in the city of Alvin, and further recognize that Peace Officers Memorial Day is observed on Thursday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, in honor of those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Join me. Oh, look who's here. Now it's a party. Thank you.
I really don't have anything to say other than there's been a lot of officers in Texas. Usually we lead the nation and officers lost every year. Hopefully this year will be better, and I'm proud to serve along such a, it's a mildly looking crew, but they're the nicest, most professional bunch I've ever worked with, and I'm proud of them.
Chief. Next we'll recognize Mr. Richard Clapper, Keep Alvin Beautiful. I'm pleased to be able to read this proclamation to you, Richard. It says, whereas Richard Clapper has been a dedicated member of the Keep Alvin Beautiful Commission since two thousand and four, actively working to promote beautification, environmental stewardship, and community pride throughout the city of Alvin. And whereas Richard's leadership and volunteer efforts for over twenty years have greatly contributed to numerous citywide initiatives, including litter abatement projects, tree plantings, public education campaigns, and beautification programs that have enhanced the quality of life for all residents. And whereas the city of Alvin is proud to recognize individuals like Richard Clapper who selfishly invest their time and talents toward building a cleaner, greener, and more beautiful community for future generations, and now therefore I, Gabe Adame, as the Mayor of the City of Alvin, Texas, and on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim Friday, May second, two thousand twenty-five is Richard Clapper Day in the city of Alvin, and extend our sincere appreciation to Mr. Clapper for his outstanding contributions to the Keep Alvin Beautiful Commission and the greater Alvin community, encouraging all citizens to join us in honoring his exemplary service.
Well, it's been a good twenty-one years. There's been a new group taking over. All the old guys like me are all retiring or are passing on. And I'm really pleased to announce that we've got a terrific group of people that are taking over. They've already been active for about a year. They're not gonna miss a lick. They're really doing us a great job. I appreciate the help from the City Council and particularly Dan and the Parks Department. You can't do much on Keep Alvin Beautiful without Dan's help, so much of it goes on in parks and things like that. And he's always there to answer the call for us, and we appreciate the help we've had from City Council all these years.
Thank you. We have someone else who would like to say a few words?
I just took this group over last year, and it's been a great honor to work with Richard as long as I have. He's been very knowledgeable and very helpful to me. So on behalf of Keep Alvin Beautiful, we want to present him this plaque. You're welcome. You deserved it. Just so everybody knows, it is out, the Great American, or Great Alvin Cleanup this Saturday. We will be at the National Oak Park, and y'all can come out and help us clean the streets.
Do we wanna get a picture with all the KV members and County Richard and Councilor? Thank you. Okay, motorcycle safety is next. Okay, who's receiving the proclamation? Very nice. Here we go. Whereas May has been nationally recognized as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, encouraging all drivers to remain diligent, check blind spots, use turn signals, and respect motorcyclists right to the road. And whereas organizations such as Warriors Bikes for Charity and law enforcement agencies actively promote rider education, proper training, and increased public awareness to improve motorcycle safety. And whereas motorcycles provide fuel-efficient transportation for commuting, touring, recreation, relaxation, and enjoyment. And whereas it is essential for all motorists to be aware of motorcyclists on the road, practice safe driving habits, and share the road responsibly to prevent accidents and save lives. Now therefore, I, Mayor Gabe Adame, as the Mayor of the City of Alvin, Texas, and on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim May two thousand twenty-five as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in the city of Alvin, and urge all citizens to join the Warriors Bikers for Charity in raising awareness, promoting safe driving practices, and supporting efforts to reduce motorcycle-related accidents. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Hello, everyone. As you all know, we are the Warriors Bikers for Charity, Missouri County representing Alvin. We have Harris County, Gulf Coast, and Galveston also. The Missouri County, see, we are one, well, we are the four chapters in the Gulf Coast area. We all, we all, with all the beautiful things, things, conditions at hand, and all the motorcycle enthusiasts that have waited for this perfect weather, riding conditions that are upon us, we will be cruising the roads for the best therapy you could ever imagine, wind therapy. We are here to promote motorcycle awareness for the month of May. We want to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to promote motorcycle awareness here in your city of Alvin. Thank you.
This one's for the music, Alvin Music Office and Advisory Board. Whereas the Alvin Music Office and Advisory Board were officially established on August third, two thousand twenty-three, under the coordination of the Alvin Convention and Visitors Bureau, with the mission of fostering a vibrant supportive environment for Texas musicians. And whereas on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Texas Music Office, part of the office of the Governor, proudly certified the city of Alvin as a music-friendly Texas community. And whereas music has a power to unite people, enrich our lives, and inspire future generations through its rhythm, stories, and spirit. And whereas the city of Alvin has long embraced the joy of music, from the sounds of the Alvin Music Fest and the Alvin Opry House to local venues that echo with the rich heritage and enduring legacy of Texas music. Now therefore, I, Mayor Gabe Adame, as the Mayor of the City of Alvin, Texas, and on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim May twenty-third and twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five as a second annual Sound of Alvin Music Weekend in the city of Alvin, and encourage all residents to join in celebrating and supporting our talented local artists who truly embody our spirit of small town, big sound. Congratulations.
I would just like to thank y'all. This week, not this weekend, but May ninth, next Friday, we have the Alvin Opry House. It is the second Friday of each month. It's family-friendly. The Alvin Opry has been around for like thirty-something years. And Tommy and I both started singing there, and he played there back in the day. The Alvin Opry House was open back in two thousand nineteen, and so we would really like for anybody in the community to come out and support us. Live music needs support. You have to be there to hear it live. So we appreciate anyone that's already came and all the support from the city.
Thank you all very much. Let's see, next we'll move into public comment. I believe we've got three public comments. See, first we'll start with Athlyn Roberts.
Good evening, everyone. So this is Courtney Lander. She's our new Tourism and Marketing Officer for the city of Alvin. She's a proud twenty fifteen graduate of Sam Houston State University. Go Bearcats. She didn't think I would say that, because I'm an Aggie, but that's fine. Go Bearcats. We're glad she's here. She holds a degree in Mass Communications with a concentration in Public Relations and Advertising. She previously served as the Communications and Marketing Assistant for the city of Angleton, where she planned and implemented major events like Angleton Market Days. With deep roots in Missouri County, growing up in Angleton, and now living in Pearland, Courtney is excited to promote all that makes Alvin unique. So we're really happy to have her here.
Speech.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for having me. It's a pleasure, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Uh, let's see, next, let's see, we've got Talisa Keel. Sorry, did I say that last? I can't remember if I said that right, the last name.
You did. I never put the pronunciation for the last name, because I feel like, you know, it's a little bit easier, but the first name, I always add the pronunciation. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Adame, City Council members, and community members that are in attendance. I am here to announce that, if you didn't know, we have this little thing called Local Elections going on right now. And one of the positions on there is our Alvin Independent School District School Board of Trustees. There are two positions that are currently open, and I am here to represent myself as a candidate for position five. And so I'm really excited to be here and meet you again, Mayor. I'll say, one of the things I really appreciated in our first interaction, I want to say last week on maybe the second or third day of early voting was your leadership style. It was my first time meeting you, and you showed up because candidates were concerned about regulations at the polls. And you came out, you listened to our concerns, and I think that it is so important that we have a leadership that is willing to meet community members face-to-face, address their concerns, hear them out, evaluate the situation. And in that moment, you were able to make the appropriate adjustments. So, thank you for that, because that was extremely beneficial. As we all know, as elected officials, we have full-time jobs as well. And one of the deals that the mayor allowed us to do was to have tables out there, and someone who works full-time, it allowed me to be able to comfortably work on my laptop while I was also out there advocating for myself, and it made it much more comfortable. So, thank you for that. So, a little bit about me, I don't know how much time I have, so I'll try to do my 30-second pitch. I am a native of Galveston County, grew up in Lamarck, Texas, graduated from Lamarck High School, joined the military as soon as I joined, as soon as I got out of high school, was able to complete my degree at Lamar University, got my graduate degree out of University of Houston Clear Lake, and I have a leadership certification out of Rice University. I served eight years in the Army National Guard, which included a ten-month, close to ten-month deployment to Iraq. And when I came back, I didn't know what I was going to do. I did a lot of odd jobs, worked in retail, worked for a car wash, did all the things, substitute taught, and then decided to go to school, because a lot of folks don't realize that as much as we support our veterans, the resources really weren't, aren't available to you in that way. And so, I decided to go to school, because I needed the money. And I got my degree in sociology of mental health. That's when I got my master's degree, and it was because I, while I came back with all of my limbs, and our entire unit came back, we unfortunately began to lose folks to suicide. And so, I dedicated my life work at that time to mental health and behavioral health and suicide prevention, which led me into my role at the Gulf Coast Center. The Gulf Coast Center serves both Galveston and Brazoria County, and that was my first sort of step into Brazoria County, because through there, I was able to serve veterans. Sorry, thank you. I was able to serve veterans and educators, because working at a mental health authority, I had to get trained in mental health first aid. And since then, I have dedicated, dedicated my life's work to serving my community, both in voluntary roles and my professional life. I hope to bring to the school board awareness of psychological safety, strategic leadership, and order, because that's the background that I know. Thank you for your time. Thank you for honoring our law enforcement officers. I am a police wife myself, and so, definitely understand the sacrifices that our first responder families make each and every day. And I hope that you guys, if you haven't voted already, you'll learn a little bit more about me on my website and the information that I've left out front, and cast your vote for Talisa Keel. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Brian Robertson.
Over the last month, me and Talisa, we've had a string of events, typically she talks first. And when I look at the timing, I learn I'll go off of notes to make sure I stay within mine. But no, good evening, mayor and city council members. I'd like to first begin by thanking the city of Alvin for your visible and active engagement during this election season. Local businesses such as Busy Bee, Eighteen Twenty Coffee House, Monde Ray's Little Mexico, Classic Walk, truly represents the heart and values of the city of Alvin. I've patronized them pretty frequently over the last month. Their continued support and presence adds so much to this city. Also want to commend the city for organizing a wonderful Frontiers Day Parade. My sons and I had the pleasure of riding in the parade on Saturday, and it was memorable, a memorable experience for my family, and thank you for that. Additionally, I want to recognize both the city and Brazoria County for running some smooth elections and well-coordinated election processes here in the city. And thank you, mayor, for what you have done to lean your efforts. Your efforts to ensure accessibility and transparency in voting are deeply appreciated. Now, for those who don't know me, my name is Brian K. Robertson II. I'm a candidate for Alvin ASD School Board of Trustees, position four. I'm a veteran educator who has served fifteen years in our schools, from special ed teacher, paraprofessional, special ed, paraprofessional, speech and debate coach, football and track coach, assistant principal, associate principal, and turned around two schools during the pandemic. One, working alongside, I believe, one of your family members in Lamar Consolidated, Ms. Sierra King. She is a dynamic.
Sierra Garaville.
Garaville, we can't leave that one out. Uh, she's a firecracker. But I learned so much working alongside her. And thank you once again to your family. You have a family of those who lend themselves to service, both in public education and law enforcement, and I want to recognize that. I'm running to bring my firsthand knowledge of our schools to the board to better serve our students, educators, and our families. Now, you can learn more about my vision and priorities in the Alvin Sun, the Community Impact on Facebook, no matter which group you're in, I hear I'm out there pretty, pretty wide. As well as, most importantly, I encourage everyone to make your voice heard, no matter who you vote for, to get out there this Saturday from seven to seven, to let your voice be heard. Once again, I'm Brian K. Robertson, running for position four of Alvin ASD School Board. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Very good. That's all we have for there, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that you would like to remove from the consent agenda, starting with you, Councilman Garaville?
No, mayor.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, mayor.
Agenda.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Items approved on the consent agenda are the city council workshop meeting minutes from April 3rd, April 3rd city council meeting minutes, and the approval of the April 15th, 2025 city council workshop meeting minutes. Item D, ordinance 25K, amending Chapter 9 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances. City of Alvin, Texas, providing for the adoption of the 2024 International Fire Code is published by the National Fire Protection Association, providing certain amendments and deletions to said standard code, providing for separability clause, providing for a penalty, providing for publication, providing for savings clause, providing for an effective eight, and setting forth other provisions related thereto. Item E, addendum number three for a one-year renewal agreement with American Janitorial LTD for janitorial services of city-owned buildings and park restrooms in the amount of $220,340 and $220,340.40, and authorize the city manager to sign the addendum upon legal review. Item F, addendum number three for a one-year renewal agreement with the Brant Companies LLC for HVAC preventative maintenance services for city-owned buildings in the amount of $113,256, and authorize the city manager to sign the addendum upon legal review. Item G, addendum number one for a one-year renewal agreement with Landscape Professionals of Texas for lawn services through public bid process B2405, containing select city-owned and state right-of-way property, including parkland, lift stations, water wells, and various building grounds in the amount of $265,671, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review. Item H, addendum number one for a one-year renewal agreement with Landscape Professionals of Texas for lawn services through public bid process B2406, containing select parkland and other city-owned property and Gordon Street, and Gordon Street Bridge in the amount of $68,100, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review. Item I, addendum number two for a one-year renewal agreement with Horticare Landscape Management for landscape maintenance services for flowerbeds of city-owned buildings, parks, and other city property and right-aways in the amount of $82,772, and authorize the city manager to sign the addendum upon legal review. Item J, an agreement with facility sources for foundation repair of city-owned building located at 800 Dyke Lane, Public Services Facility Number Two, through the Byboard Interlocal Purchasing System in the amount of $80,170, and authorize the city manager to sign related documents upon legal review. Item K, a contract between the city of Alvin and the Texas General Land Office for Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program funding in the amount of $6,500 under GLO Contract Number 24065151F010 for the Durant Street Drainage and M1 Crossing Improvements Project, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract upon legal review. Item L, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase 1, Section 1, located along the south side of FM 1462, one mile east of the 288 intersection, being a planned unit development of 29.86 acres. Item M, acknowledged receipt of the quarterly investment report as of March 31st, 2025, and item N, acknowledged receipt of the fiscal year 2025 Capital Improvement Program Quarterly Report. Mayor?
Wow, give it up for Dixie Roberts. Thank you, Dixie. Moving on to other business, item A, discuss and consider resolution 25R10, adopting the Alvin Public Art Program to enhance community beautification and to support the integration of public art into the community, and setting forth other provisions related thereto.
So, mayor and council, it's me again. And this resolution, first of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to discuss this with you tonight. This resolution seeks formal adoption of the Alvin Public Art Program, otherwise known as APAP. So, what is APAP, you ask? I'm so glad that you asked that question. It's a guiding document for how the city will approach public art initiatives. Everything from murals and sculptures to decorated traffic utility boxes, as we'll discuss in the next item on the agenda, or various benches around town. It helps us create inviting and meaningful public spaces that truly reflect the identity and culture in Alvin. So, and it also supports both temporary and permanent art installations. So, why this, why this program is valuable? Why is it valuable, you ask? So, the public art encourages community pride, it enhances beautification, and it boosts tourism. It gives local and regional artists an opportunity to contribute to our shared spaces. It also, this is my favorite, it just brings people together. When you see the murals around town, when you see the various art exhibits in other communities, it brings people together, and that's what we're wanting. They come to take photos, and we just want to shine Alvin's character. So, the program oversight and process, this program will have a public art committee, and it will be made up of residents, artists, business owners who have a public interest or an interest in art. The committee will be guided by city staff, and, and the projects will be in coordination and handled through the CVB Convention and Visitors Bureau. Future art projects will be managed through a formal RFP, a request for proposal. This is just to ensure that we're transparent and we get quality projects within the city. Important to note that there is no, we're not, there's no cost to the city at this time. Each project will be brought before the, the committee, and what we have is we have a line item in the CVB budget for public art initiatives, and so that's where we plan to, to use this funding. We're also looking at funding processes to include grants, public-private partnerships, private sponsorships, and even our relationship with Keep Alvin Beautiful. We hope to engage with them and get some public art going within the community. So, what this is, the, the Alvin Public Art Program just basically lays, lays the foundation for a broader initiative to bring more public art into Alvin. One example, as we'll talk about, that will fall under the Alvin Public Art umbrella, will be the Traffic Box Wrapping and Painting Program. So, in closing, this is just a flexible, scalable program that promotes beautification, civic pride, and creativity. We do recommend approval of this resolution, and I will offer it up. Any questions that you may have?
Any questions?
Mayor, move to approve resolution 25R10, adopting the Alvin Public Art Program APAP to enhance community beautification and to support the integration of public art into the community, and setting forth other provisions related thereto.
Second.
Please vote. You know, with the, the sound of music and everything else in this, one might say that A in Alvin stands for artistic.
It does. I like it. Motion passes unanimously.
Not average.
Not average. Okay. Item B. Discuss and consider resolution 25R11, adopting the Traffic Control Box Wrapping Painting Program as an official component to the Alvin Public Art Program, and setting forth other related matters thereto.
Mayor and council, it's me again. So, this resolution formally adopts the Traffic Control Wrapping and Painting Program as an official component of the APAP. So, this initiative is a direct action step that is outlined in the city's strategic plan. It supports our goal of beautification and community engagement. So, as we all travel around Texas, I know we all have, you've seen these boxes out. And I, when you look at these, you look at them, right Suzanne, and you're like, man, that just pops, that's amazing, I want that in our community. So, this is, as I said, in a strategic plan initiative. We've been, Suzanne saw me before Christmas and wanted to get this project going, and I told her, well, it is part of our strategic plan, and so here we are. The city of Angleton has a similar program, as well as the city of Pearland, and so, and we also have a, a city-owned utility box that is painted, if you'll notice, at Seeley and Second, that's been there for a while. And so, that's the initiative we're trying to, to go for. So, the program that, that you have before you tonight is mirrored off some of the same successful programs within the state. So, some key program features, the city-owned boxes are eligible for vinyl wrapping and/or hand painting. We have six of those around town that are owned by the city. All designs will be reviewed by the Alvin Public Art Committee. The Text dot-owned boxes must have, they must be vinyl wrapped. This is a requirement of Text dot. So, artists for these boxes will be solicited through the request for proposal process. And all of the designs for Text dot, we have to submit a whole package to Text dot. It's an application, it is designed, the, the design, that work that wants to, that is going to go on the box, as well as dimensions, and so it's a rather thorough process. We also included in here a provision that Alvin High School and other local institutions can participate without having to go through the RFP process. Those are for city-owned boxes, so that they can just, we can work with the, the committee, and they can approve their design. Locations, there are six, as I stated, city-owned boxes throughout the city, and we have twenty-four Text dot boxes that we have identified across the city. So, oversight and implementation, it will be, again, be coordinated by the Alvin CVB. Artwork will be reviewed by the committee, the Alvin Public Art Committee, and RFPs will guide the artist's selection for the Text dot wrappings. Cost and fundings, I think I mentioned earlier, well, the estimated cost for the wrapping is around 2,500 to 3,000, could be less, could be more, it depends on the size and the location. There is no ongoing obligation for this program with, with city funds. We do have, as I stated, that line item within the CVB budget that we can use to help promote, as well as our partnership with Keep Alvin Beautiful. Suzanne's already talked to some companies who do the wrapping, and so we're gonna just merge our forces and try to do some great things within the city. Again, funding will come from CVB, Keep Alvin Beautiful, community sponsorships. Why it matters, this is a very low-cost, high-visibility project that will promote Alvin's pride. It supports local artists, enhances community engagement, and contributes to a more inviting and creative atmosphere. And so, with that, I would recommend, ask that you approve this resolution. And I open up to any questions you may have.
Question. When, like, if a local artist wants to, and this, to this, but also kind of to the last thing we voted on, if they wanted to paint a mural, or maybe paint a box, when they submit an RFP, will there be any sort of payment they would have to submit? Like a, maybe a permit?
Would we pay them?
Yes. Oh, no, no, they pay like, like for any other permit?
No.
Okay.
Not for that. The only thing we would have to do, we have to go for Text dot, we have to go through the actual, there's like a ten-page sheet that we have to fill out, application, and we have to submit that, but there's no permit, there's no fee for any of this.
Okay, good.
We just want, and there, in, in this, there is a provision, if we have, we can pay the artists just a little sum, I mean, some cities do $200 to those who, the winning artist, and so we can have that, we have that money, if we so choose to do that.
Okay.
It was three, about $3,000, is that per box?
Per box, yes.
Good lord.
Yeah.
I spent that much to wrap my truck.
I, yeah. It's.
That's, that's a lot, that's high.
It is. It's, it's, in my research, that's what I found, about 2,500 to 3,000.
I'll do it for a thousand.
So, but that again, it, it depends on the size, the location, and so, we're not gonna go out and do all 24 at one time. It's gonna be a multi-year process.
Have we, does the college still have an automotive department where they do the training for painting and all that kind of stuff?
I don't know, but I know Text dot is very particular, like.
About who does it?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to use certain licensed companies, and, yeah, because the, the boxes get hot, and so they have to have a specialized product to put on top of the.
And I, I know the wraps don't typically last that long either.
Yeah, three to five years.
Yeah.
And so, it's in there as well. If we see that it's looking disheveled, and we need to take it off or make some changes, we have, as, we have that.
We've priced those things out too, taken it off, and?
Um, we haven't, I didn't price taking it off. Is it? Okay.
It's twice the work. The bake's on there, basically.
We can send a mural out with some paint.
That's what I'm thinking. Some sandpaper and?
Yeah. Yeah.
Dixie, forgive me if I overlooked this, but if, so like, the box on Second Street has the lady, the lady jacket on it, I believe that was done by the high schoolers, actually when I was in high school, when they painted it. Will that no longer be, like, we, will no, they'll no longer be able to paint it, it will have to be wrapped?
No. So, the, the city-owned boxes, it allows a provision for them to go out and do that. And if they wanted to wrap it, they could.
And that's a city-owned box?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have six of them throughout the city.
Mm-hmm. And two of them are already painted? Because I think there's two boxes are painted, right? Two traffic boxes?
I just know of one. There used to be two at the corner here in front of the law office. It was on a pole right next to it, but I, they, they removed it.
I don't have it on this one. Yeah, I got chicken dick one.
Okay, any more questions? If not, we'll maintain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution 25R11, adopting the Traffic Control Box Wrapping Painting Program as an official component of the Alvin Public Art Program, APEP, and setting forth other related matters thereto.
Second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item C, consider the purchase of thirty mobile computer, computer terminals for the police department for the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase upon legal review. Chief?
Excuse me, Mayor, Council, good evening. In March of this year, we went live with our new CAD RMS product. And we quickly found out our computers were underpowered. Now, when we started the project in twenty-two, early twenty-two, when we first got the specs for the CAD RMS system, the Mobile Premier One, our computers met those, met those specifications to run it. However, fast forward two and a half, three years and the product we ordered, obviously, is not what we got. We got something that was upgraded, more robust, security upgrades, et cetera. And in the cars, we've added cameras that have been upgraded to run ALPR cameras, et cetera, et cetera. And, and the computers just simply won't run the system at a appropriate, with an amount of appropriate efficiency. Plus, our chief internet technology person gave me the great news that Windows is canceling or no longer updating Windows 10 as of October. And without it, we cannot make Siege's Criminal Justice Information System compliance, which means we will not be able to access criminal justice information systems after that occurs. So, what I'm asking for is thirty MCTs for the cars, it'd be actually twenty-seven for the PD and three for animal control, is that correct? Along with installation, we have a plan to, of a tack to get these things in and programmed, then installed, and then tested well before October, if we're lucky, knock on wood. Depends how long it takes to get them in once they're ordered, if, obviously, if you approve the purchase. Staff does recommend the purchase and I'm, I'm about to ask any, answer any questions you may have. And if it's anything too technologically advanced, I have to warn you though, that I've been, I have on good authority that IT makes up words when they're talking to you. Just saying.
Last time we, when did we purchase the, the previous MDTs?
It's, it's been a while. And I forgot to mention that, our current MCTs, we run, have run those for five to seven years, depending on what car they're in. And if you use a computer every day at work, if you get three years out of it, you're doing good. We were able to buy warranties, et cetera, and keep them running. Plus, the system we got away from hasn't been updated in probably eight years because they got sold to another company who sold them to another company who quit supporting the product, which is why we had to go into a CAD, new CAD RMS system anyway. For those of you who don't know, CAD RMS, Computer Rated Dispatch and Record Management System. It's basically the nuts and bolts of the PD's computer systems.
We expect these to be good for a couple of years? Or is it something that's gonna be...
Five years? Three to five? It's, it's basically the same company we've been ordering from, it's just our new product. So...
Are we able to surplus any of the old ones?
We've tried to, we've tried to upgrade a couple of them and they've managed breaking because inside...
Surplus as far as selling to other agencies, smaller agencies who don't use that system?
We can, we have two ways of getting rid of those products by, by city policy. One is to destroy them, the other one's put them up to auction. So, after IT gets through, running their magnets over them, deleting them, whatever you do nowadays in IT, whatever word he makes up for what he was gonna do with them, then we can put them up for auction. So...
So, I know a lot of smaller agencies who will buy those at discounted rate.
Well, without being able to upgrade past Windows 10, they don't be good for a year. Because we could actually buy a upgrade product that'd be good for about twelve months, but we'd just be wasting money having to buy new computers anyway. So...
And we're looking to go with the, the GTAC or the...
That is what our chief information technology officer and our, our officers who do in-house have recommended.
Mayor, move to approve purchase for thirty mobile computer terminals for the police department for the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase upon legal review.
Second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll consider if any requests from individual council members. Garvey?
No, sir. No mayor.
No, sir.
No, sir?
Very good. Reports from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as, as stated earlier, Election Day is Saturday, May third, seven AM to seven PM. We're encouraging everyone who has not voted to vote. Also, on May fifteenth, at city council, a city council reception will be held on the First World Conference Room at City Hall. This event will honor council members Castro and Starkey, and also welcome the new elected council members. Light refreshments will be served. And lastly, on June third, the City of Alvin, in partnership with Tech dot, will hold a town hall meeting to discuss the Grand Parkway at the Alvin High School cafeteria from six PM to seven PM. That's June third, six PM to seven PM. And also, the city does plan to hold these town halls annually until the project is, is complete. So, that, Mayor.
Thank you. Items of community interest? Councilman Starkey?
This is my last official meeting, council meeting. After nine years, starting in two thousand and sixteen, it's, it's been an experience. But, there's been good, there's been bad. I've seen a lot of positive things done. And representing this city, this community, and working on behalf of it has, has been an honor. One of the, one of the things, when I first started in two thousand and sixteen, was just, it was like a mantra, and I always told the newer personnel that came on after me, is that you vote for the good of all, not some. And I believe that. And there's another thing, though. Aristotle once said that man is the noblest of all creatures, but without law and justice, he is the worst. And it makes a lot of sense when you think about it. So, I appreciate the people that have helped me. I appreciate Anru, Suzanne, Dixie, the chief, everyone. And with that, good night.
I have no comments.
Can't top that, huh?
Uh, no, sir.
Since we missed it, I just want to give a shout out to Dixie. Next week is National Municipal Kirk's Week. And I want to say I, we, I think, I can speak for everybody, we appreciate everything you do. Thank you very much. That's it, Mayor.
Oh, I, I forget. Richard paid me good money to tell you guys that he hit the ball very, very well Sunday. We played golf together in a tournament and he, he, he's a heck of a golfer. Did I get it right? So, did I get it all?
Tell her about the hole in the one.
All right, next, we're going to go into executive session. Executive session under section five-five-one, zero-four-one-five to, I'm sorry, five-five-one-zero-seven-four of the Local Government Code, Deliberation on the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Assignment, Discipline or Dismissal of a Public Officer or Employee. Time is seven forty-eight.
Thank you.
Okay folks, we are reconvened from executive session at nine o'clock PM. Is there any action coming from executive session?
Mayor, I move to approve the city attorney's contract as presented.
Second.
All vote.
Where's Glenn?
There he is.
There's Glenn.
There's Glenn.
What's more around the block?
So nostalgia. We got a second, we're voting on the extension of the city attorney's contract.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, congratulations. Okay so we're adjourned to bang the gavel.
We're adjourned.
Alright.